Welcome to the West Covina City Council Candidate Forum. This forum will follow the format and rules listed below to ensure a fair and orderly discussion among the candidates and productive engagement from the audience.
Let's start off with the first question.
Okay, introduction.
Oh, we'll start with number one. I'm sorry. I just assumed number one was going to be number one.
Oh, yeah.
Our number one candidate is Brian Tabatabai. Our number three candidate, who is number two tonight, will be Cecilia Munoz. And our number four candidate will... Our number three candidate, who is number four tonight, will be John Shoemaker. First candidate. I'm sorry?
Introduction.
Opening statement.
Go ahead and say this.
One more time. I'm sorry.
So, I'll start with my opening statement. Is that what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, all right. You know, it's all good. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Tabatabai. I want to thank the Historical Society, Hearst Ranch, all the volunteers who made this happen. For those of you who don't know me, and this is your introduction to me, I am a teacher for over 20 years. I am a football coach. I've been honored the last four years to represent District One as your city council member and this past year to represent the entire city of West Covina as its mayor. Four years ago, when I ran, I had three priorities: to deal with our homeless issue, to fix our infrastructure, and to make sure that everyone in West Covina felt included. During those four years, even though I've been on the council minority, I've been able to address each of those priorities. Recently, I was able to secure $16 million of Measure H money to bring our homeless population inside. And although that wasn't supported by my council majority, I continue to fight to make sure we bring everyone inside. During my time, I've made fixing our infrastructure and our streets a huge priority. I was able to secure over $3 million working with Congresswoman Grace Palatano, and I made sure that we are putting aside money for our streets are most needed to be fixed. And I'm honored that I brought the very first fight event to the city of West Covina to make sure everyone knows that they are welcome here. As your council member, I will continue to fight, to do the hard work, to be honest. Even when you disagree with me, you'll know that I have done the work and I will give you a thoughtful response as to why I voted. So hopefully, I can earn your vote this November and continue to be the representative for District One. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, your opening statement, please.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to this beautiful facility known as Hearst Ranch. If you're not familiar with it, it is amazing and I encourage you to come back and visit again. It's beautiful. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself to everyone here tonight. My name again is Cecilia Munoz, running for District Three, Vote for Me. I am a 39-year resident of the city of West Covina. I have three children, three amazing children, two of which are here tonight, they're back there. It's Matthew and Monica, and my wonderful son-in-law, Justin. This is my family. I have nine grandchildren. They are all attending West Covina Unified School District. We have a beautiful memory smear in our city in which I am a current chairperson of our commission, the Senior and Community Services Commission. I am the current chair. The role of the commission is actually dedicated to be an advisory group to our city council, representing all of our diverse needs within the park system for our senior citizens. Also, within my three time, for 18 years, I have been actively involved in West Covina Unified School Districts, parent teacher associations. I volunteer as... For a while there, I was on commission against hate crimes. I also volunteered for... You name it, and I'm there. So we have coordinated many types and community events. And I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to introduce myself to you. Remember, vote. It's none of our business, actually, who you vote for, but do vote, make sure you're registered. And I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, your opening statement, please.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Shoemaker. I'm running for West Covina City Council, District Three. I've called West Covina home for 34 years now. I'm a father of three girls, grandfather to seven. Till my wife passed away in 2022, we've been married almost 42 years. My background is rooted in diversity. My grandmother was born in Mexico City, and I grew up in the community of Huntington Park. At 17, I left home to join the United States Air Force, where I had the absolute privilege of serving alongside a remarkable cross-section of my country. I met people from all walks of life, some famous, many who made tremendous sacrifices, and all dedicated to serving our nation with honor. In the Air Force, we quickly learned we were all in it together, united by a common purpose. Our differences were respected and celebrated, but never interfered with our mission to defend our country. I carry that philosophy with me today. Every resident of West Covina is important. As a city council member, my duty is to serve you above personal interests, family ties, or special interest groups. Using my 44 years of financial management, working with troubled organizations and being a CPA, one of my key goals has transformed the tone of our city leadership. I aim to help our city be proactive, setting our city up for success and responding effectively to your needs. My management approach is straightforward. If the organization is running smoothly, the staff is doing a great job. When issues arise, it reflects a failure of management's part in leading the council. It's our responsibility to ensure that the right people are in the right roles doing the right things. It's called accountability. For more information and who I am, you can go to my website, which is www.shoemakerzona. I look forward to the opportunity to serve you over the next four years. Kindly ask for your vote against John Shoemaker for West Covina City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that I'm on the right track, we have some questions to ask you folks. We'll start with Brian. First question. Why are you running for city council?
This is my community. I'm invested here. We bought our home when my son was three. He's now 11. Goes to Orangewood Elementary School, and this is our home. And, you know, my grandmother, when she came back from April to East LA, she was a fighter. My uncle was denied college prep courses, and my grandmother was part of that fight that got access, access to college prep. He went to Vietnam, he came back. He's the GI Bill. He created a better future for himself and for his family. And that's what I want to do. I want to continue the legacy of my grandparents, the legacy of folks like the Lord Suerta, who's been a big supporter and mentor of mine, and just continue that kind of work and be the shoulders for my son to stand on. And he can continue the work of making this a better place.
Thank you. Cecilia, why are you running for city council?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to answer that question. What I bring to the city of West Covina when I am elected as your council member is, of course, redirection. I want to ensure that every resident here in the city is completely respected. Every resident will feel that their voice matters. Every resident will know that when they have a question, I will either... Within the next 30 days, I can go to your home. I will drive by and meet with you wherever you are available to meet with me because your voice matters and it is important to me to know that with my skill set, I have 40 years of working in municipal government, and that included the Housing Authority of the County of Los Angeles. I have 19 years of municipal experience as a liaison for the mayor and the city council in the city of Pomona. That's the skill set I have, and that's what I bring today. I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you. John, your turn. Why are you running for city council?
Basically, to restore some fiscal responsibility to our community, to turn the priorities from a specific person or group and towards every one of you in this room and everybody watching on TV or listening over the internet. Also, to make sure that the priorities are where they need to be. We need to have, by my election, we're going to have a council that actually will be independent. You'll have the mayor, you'll have me, and you will have... You have me, you have the mayor, and you'll have only councils. So you'll have three independent voices who are looking out for the community, not themselves. Because that's what is most important, is that we listen to all of you, come to some conclusions, and let you know why we're voting away and not doing it in complete and utter silence like is happening today. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another question, and this time we will start off with Cecilia Munoz. That question is, "The city holds community workshops for residents. What is the purpose? Do you think they are very effective?"
Thank you for that question. Any opportunity for the public to come together, especially our residents, is an important event, whether it is to discuss crime and safety or to discuss things that are of grave importance to only one neighborhood. Every opportunity to talk one-on-one, together as a group, as a neighborhood, is important. And I would support any type of community meeting where there is education of our residents to bring them up to speed on current trends in our politics, especially when it comes to housing, homelessness, our economic, supporting our small businesses, supporting our farmers' market, or learning how to do environmental waste. Any opportunity to meet is important, especially if it's providing education and it gives me, as a council member, an opportunity to learn all about you. Thank you.
John Shoemaker. "The city holds community workshops for residents. What is the purpose? Do you think they are effective?"
With the current leadership, they're not effective at all because they don't listen, they don't care. It's that simple. With the change in council, you're going to have people who are going to pay attention to what's going on or asking the questions and listening to the public. Right now, we have workshops that they used to record, and you could go back to play and listen to them so you get an idea what's going on. Quit doing that, like on the budget. You know, very specific questions that were answered that all of you would want to know the answers to, but don't because all of you are not there. So that's the first thing. Yes, they're good when you have the right people in place and somebody like me is going to listen to, you know, the people, the voters, the residents, see what they have to say. I understand. I don't have all the answers. I am stretching the imagination. So I'm going to be looking to all of you and those of you who are listening and those of you who are not even listening to give me some advice so I can make well-informed decisions that benefit this community. Thank you.
Brian Tabatabai. "The city holds community workshops for residents. What is the purpose? Do you think they are effective?"
Community meetings, community workshops are important. Councilman Contos who's here tonight and myself routinely hold monthly meetings with the community. You need to be speaking with your residents. You need to be listening to them. You need to be hearing them out. But there is also the educational piece. I understand when the Pathway Home project was going to be coming in front of the city, I held multiple community meetings, YouTube Live. I met with folks that I knew were going to be against the project to educate them and inform them on what the project was, what it wasn't. Those things are important. Again, the community needs to understand what is happening in the city, what may be happening in the city, what might be coming down the pipe. And council members need to also be aware of what's going on in the city. We're only two lives, right? We have a city of 110,000 people. So these are important, they're necessary, and they need to happen more often. Thank you.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, you are next first. What do you see as the biggest problem in West Covina?
Our financial stability. That, very sweet and simple. And the reason is it drives everything else that we do. If you don't have the funds being spent in the right places on the right things, you don't do anything. We can't have a great police department. We do it, but if we're spending money on frivolous things, we're not going to have a great police department. We're not going to have a great fire department. We're not going to continue with parks being maintained. You can already see that we have streets and sidewalks that need repair and they don't get done. You see, you go to one of our parks, I believe it's, we refer to it as Airplane Park, that there's tars on the roof not being repaired. You see money, $1.1 million was taken out of funds that were for health programs and feeding people to fix a roof. That's not the way we need to have priorities. And that's one of the reasons I want to be on the council because I'm going to work with my fellow council members to set the priorities correctly.
Brian Tabatabai. What do you see as the biggest problem in West Covina?
It is our financial stability. Again, I think had COVID and ARPA not happened, the city was in real trouble. The reality is the $19 million in ARPA funds, as was mentioned, helped fix a lot of infrastructure that needed to be fixed. And the reality is I've been the lone vote against two of them. The biggest waste of money that the city has spent are pursuit of a West Covina Public Health Department, which cost us over $1 million of ARPA money and would make the city insolvent and go into bankruptcy if it were ever approved. Again, I continue to fight against that. But also, the city's takeover of the sportsplex. That was built to be a private-public partnership. We are subsidizing that facility almost $1 million a year. Already spent over $3 million of taxpayer money for a park that sits empty, that has two restaurants that will not have an operator because we can't fill it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz. What do you see as the biggest problem in West Covina?
Well, I'm going to agree with Mayor Tabatabai and my counterpart here, John Shoemaker, that our fiscal stability is in crisis state. Priority number one is to actually eliminate the burden, the financial burden of the West Covina Health Department. For individuals who may not be aware, the current budget of the city has this particular department, maybe, for lack of a better description, kind of penciled in. My goal would be to eliminate that racing. The public has not benefited from the initiative called the West Covina Health Department. It has been a distraction. Moving forward, getting green about the sportsplex as well. We need to bring that back to a revenue-generating facility that is enjoyed by all. One of the things that is most important to me is you can point that we need to redirect all of our energy to developing the future of this community by emphasizing the role of leadership in our youth, starting from very young. We have to have that career path here at the city. If I am elected, I will work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Brian Tabatabai. Someone is asking if you support continuing districts. Let me kind of expand on that. The last 10, 15 years, the San Gabriel Valley cities have been divided up into voting districts. And I think what this person is asking is, do you support districts? Is there a way to change that?
That's a great question, and I support districts, but I understand why folks would want to get rid of them. As the representative for District One, I have seen as the minority on the council how a council majority could punish the district of the minority member. And having said that, someone like myself would be very difficult to run a whole-city campaign. It is extremely expensive. And the representation, for too long, I represent the West Side of West Covina. The West Side was not represented on the council. The community I live in wasn't represented on the council. The voice of the residents on the West Side was not represented. So I understand why folks would want to get rid of districts, but I understand why they're needed and why if you have the right five council members, we can win. Thank you.
Cecilia Munoz. Do you support continuing districts?
That's a great question. I, for 19 years, I worked for the city of Pomona. Pomona is a city that is divided by districts. And what was, is, what happens actually is that when you do have, oftentimes, an elected official who may be distracted or by other issues, oftentimes, the needs of an entire city become sort of lost in the minutia of politics. There are upsides to having districts, such as the ability to ensure that everyone can be represented. And then there are downsides to having districts. If I am elected and based on my experience working with the city of Pomona in the district environment and now here in the city of West Covina with also a district environment, also work for Allen County District Environment, Supervisory Districts, my goal is collaboration, communication for the future.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, do you support continuing districts?
You know, it's a double-edged sword. You know, the other people that say this are very true when they say it makes it a little bit easier for people to run. But the biggest drawback in my mind is you have five people making decisions for everybody, but I only get to vote for one of them. And then you also have the situation where in a certain district, like the last election, nobody else ran. So people didn't have a choice. And you take it even farther, you go to District Number One, there's only two choices. Where if we were citywide, there would be five of us vying for the two seats so it'd give people much greater flexibility on who they want to represent. Because no matter how it works, districts or not, we do represent everybody. You know, and I can go back in history that if we had districts, BKK would still be a running duck because they wouldn't have cared about the people on the South Side. By not having them, people knew that there were a group of people that could get them out of office. So we closed that. So there's advantages and disadvantages. I'd more be inclined to say, you know, I'd like to see them go.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz. How will you address safety and crime and the graffiti in West Covina?
That's an amazing question as well. It's graffiti, crime, and the need for public safety is something that we face every day. I am pro-labor. I am pro-safety. My husband is a retired law enforcement officer. He was a sheriff's deputy who did judicial protection for our judges for Los Angeles County. I have a son who is an electrical foreman. I have a daughter who is a school principal. So safety, public safety, graffiti removal provides for us an opportunity to be proud of the city that we live in, that we are able to be concerned with removing graffiti that oftentimes might give the impression to a community that the city is unattended or that we are without the right type of funding to actually take care of the city. We are a jewel. We are a playful city. And these, safety, public safety, law enforcement, fire, are critical. And that is my number one priority, keep that button.
Thank you. John Shoemaker. How will you address safety, crime, and graffiti in West Covina?
Well, if I could roll the clock back or go in a time machine back, you know, about 10, 15 years, I'd bring Glenn Kennedy back since he kept the city clean, you know, did unbelievable work. But it gets right back down to what I mentioned earlier about the financial viability of our city. We don't have the money, or at least we're not spending it appropriately to put it in the right places. When you have six or seven officers patrolling our city, which is about 17 square miles or something like that, how, you know, you can't answer more than three or four calls and somebody spraying you in the wall isn't a priority. With the plans that I would like to have in place, you would at least double that number, if not almost triple it. So you're going to have officers who are going down Azusa, and they're going to see somebody spraying you. So again, it's putting priorities where we need them. And we don't need them if Bigley drinks in a health department. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai. How will you address safety and crime and graffiti in West Covina?
Well, thank you for that question. I guess I'm going to take it to the district portion because in District One, we have the skate park, which for the past four years has been a major driver of graffiti. It is something that I've worked closely with the city manager and our community and Senior Services Commission to have that entire facility redone. Our skate park was the decision to put it where it was placed. It's really just made it a magnet for graffiti. And so having that skate park moved to the front, as other cities have done, would completely eliminate that issue. But in terms of public safety, again, bringing our unhoused folks inside would take away a lot of those crimes for opportunity, but also free up our PD. So much of our PD's time is done on outreach to homeless folks. And so when you get your PD back to patrolling, that's public safety. And there's many of our streets that are not well-lit. I've been canvassing, you know, by 6:45, it's time to come back in because many of our streets don't have proper street lighting. So working with Edison, making sure we get those streetlights up would also provide that public safety and help with the graffiti.
Thank you. John Shoemaker. What is your number one top priority this term?
Well, I publicly said that one of the first things I was going to ask for was a mother ma'ite brings up the health department to immediately cease all operations and notify the state that we're not going to go any farther, and notify the state that we're not going to go any farther, nor notify the county that we are not going to leave them. There's no reason for us to be paying for the same services twice. And that's what happens because we're not going to get tax money from the county or the state because they're going to look at it as we pulled out more money for them to do other things. The second thing is we're back to fiscal responsibility, going through the line items and seeing what we need to do and what we need to get rid of and what we can keep. Because that drives everything. That absolutely drives everything. We're putting things out in a budget that every one of us knows they're not going to do because they don't have the money. And there was a mention, you know, and one of the concerns I have is how much money we spent on infrastructure from the ARPA funds. That was one of the things they said you can't do. So are we going to have to give that money back in the next few years? Thank you.
Brian Tabatabai, what is your number one top priority this term and why?
It's to ensure that people's quality of life is protected. And that goes back to my number one priority from 2020, which is to bring folks inside, make sure that we don't have people sleeping in our streets, having people sleeping in dilapidated RVs, making sure they're getting those mental health, substance abuse supports if they need them, getting them into permanent housing. That also means the quality of life of all our residents. You know, again, I think when you're talking about things like crime and public safety, well, when you ensure that every resident in the community is taken care of, then you ensure those things. You know, I was the lone vote against the Amazon warehouse that would have destroyed the quality of life of residents in District One. And again, you know, even though I lost that vote, I was able to find other ways to protect District One and to stop that project. And so again, I think in every vote, I think about the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, what is your number one top priority this term and why?
My number one top priority, if when elected, is to hold my first community meeting in District One. I want to hear the voice of every single resident in the district. From that, the takeaway from that would be how to address the issue of public safety, homelessness, our finances. These are just general, basic, common sense household items. That's the first thing I'm doing if I'm elected. You're invited to my house. The second thing is that because the community voice matters, in 2018, the city did prepare a very comprehensive homeless prevention plan. I want to discuss that with the community. I want to discuss that with the residents in District One, not only one, but citywide. We are also in a fiscal plan and we need to discuss that as well. So we have a lot of housekeeping to do. That's my priority. First thirty days, going to have a community meeting and you are all invited. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question about sanctuary city. And you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you already are a sanctuary city. It happened when Mike Spence was on the council and Kevin DeLeon came to visit and forced SB fifty-two down our throats. And that's my political opinion, my apologies. If we had to vote on whether or not West Covina should be a sanctuary city, how would you vote and why would you vote yes or no?
I'm the son of immigrants. The reality is I want every resident who lives in West Covina to feel safe, to feel included, to understand they're a valuable member of the society. The reality is, I'm a teacher, I've been a teacher for over twenty years. Twenty-five percent of my students have a relationship that is undocumented. That's a reality and they work, they provide, they make our communities run. These are hardworking individuals that are welcome in my city and our city. I want to make sure that everyone understands that they are valued in the city of West Covina. And it doesn't matter your last name, doesn't matter the color of your skin, it doesn't matter the accent you speak with. You are welcome here to West Covina. We love you. Please come here. Thank you.
Cecilia Munoz, if you had to vote on whether or not West Covina should be a sanctuary city, how would you vote and why would you vote yes or no?
Everyone in the city is welcome, does not matter where you came from. I also am an adult child of a family of immigrants. My father was from Mexico. He came to the U.S. He loved this country so much that he enlisted to fight in World War II. He fought after the Normandy campaign in Europe. When he came back home, what he instilled in my family, I have a little child of six, what he instilled in us is service to the community, no matter what it looks like, no matter who they are. Service to your family, families are priority number one. I have a blended family and I am proud of that family. I have a son who is serving proudly as a lieutenant naval commander in Monterey. He is at the war college. These values are very, very important. At the time of the sanctuary city issue, times were different. I say, as Brian said, welcome everyone and love them and be kind to them. I also work for West Covina Unified School District. Children there are multilingual. We have to embrace everyone. Thank you.
John Shoemaker, if you had to vote on whether or not West Covina would be a sanctuary city, how would you vote and why would you vote yes or no?
In my mind, federal law is what rules on that. Anybody who's in the community, I'm not going to, I'm not going to care about their legal status or anything else when it comes to issues where they have needs and there's been witness to a crime or the victim of a crime. That's just being heartless, no matter what. But I also believe there's certain rules that we have to, we have to go by. And we need to make sure that we do follow those. I want everybody to feel welcome, but be in the right way. I don't agree with one of the people who isn't here, namely Councilmember Diaz, whose family thinks that Dreamers and immigrants are cockroaches. I don't agree with that. They're human beings and you treat accordingly. So that would be the way I would end up voting. Thank you.
Cecilia Munoz, how do you plan to address homelessness? The abundance of trash that is being reported to be caused by that homelessness? You support the Pathways Program?
My first priority, that is a multi-layered question and it's a great question. So my first priority is always to talk with our community first. Their voice matters. There was great opposition to the Pathways Project when it was presented. Quite frankly, I did not support it. And I did not support it, not because I am not caring about our unhoused population, our low-income population, our single mothers, our folks that are out there, children, foster care children who are everywhere we look. Not about that. I did not support the manner in which the Pathways Project was presented to our residents. They did not have an opportunity to voice their own concerns about what that might look like in their neighborhood, not just their district, but the entire city. There were concerns also regarding our finances as it relates to the Pathways Home. So how would I address that would be to make sure that the community voice is heard first.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry, I'll keep going over.
You can also finish addressing those questions at the end in your final remarks.
Thank you.
John Shoemaker, how do you plan to address homelessness and the associated abundance of trash related to that? Do you support the Pathways Program?
Well, let's start off with homeless first of all. Let's put a plan together and go get funding for it. Unlike one person who's going to demand we get money. I highly doubt Hilva Solis, Judy Chu, I know it won't be Grace Napolitano, Susan Rubio, and Blanca Rubio are going to go, oh, you're demanding the money? Yes, we're going to give you some. That's not the way it works. You go in and request it after you put a plan together. You do that, then you start taking steps to help people. It is appalling that we have like the woman who is over at Garvey and Citrus, who appears to have, needs some help that most of us can't give. But the process is set up where it can't be done. That's horrible. Pathway Home, the way it was originally given to me, which was it was a transition housing for people who were in programs and things like that, was something that I could agree with. But that's the whole catch, that, you know, it's a transition and people are being helped and continuing to be helped.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, how do you plan to address homelessness and the insinuation that the trash, the abundance of trash is related to that? Do you support the Pathways Program?
Oh, I definitely support the Pathway Home Project. The 2018 homeless plan that was referenced earlier speaks exactly about the type of project the Pathway Home Project was going to be. It was full wraparound services, interim housing, leading to permanent housing. It was fully funded by our tax dollars that we, the citizens of West Covina, have paid into Measure H. It was the money that for four years, my council colleagues had demanded in order to deal with our unsheltered population. It is the type of project that my council colleagues wanted and put as a priority when we did our council goals for four years. And so this, like I said, in 2018, when we had our homeless plan and it was presented to the community, this was prior to moving on the council, right? There was community input, there were stakeholder meetings. And so the Pathway Home Project was the fulfillment of that plan. And I will continue to work to bring something like that to the community. Thank you. I'm just, sorry, Cecilia's been a bad influence on the part. I'm like, oh, hey, she's going to be, you know, done, you know. It seems like she may want to reference District One also.
I'm losing control.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
John Shoemaker, if someone is concerned about special interest groups, lobbyists, want to know, has your campaign taken any money from developers or special interest groups?
Absolutely not. For one reason, as an accountant, there's certain ethics that I have. And one of them is the appearance of impropriety. How can I, as a member of the council, after a group of people spend tens of thousands of dollars to get me elected, for me to be able to look you in the eye and go, oh, it has nothing to do with the money they gave you? Well, you know what? They wouldn't be giving you the money if you didn't agree with them one hundred percent. At least I don't think, you know, I'm not going to give people a lot of money if they don't agree with me and do what I want. So how are they representing you? So I just stay away from them. So I'm pretty much self-financed. I do have some smaller donations that are coming in, but none of them are from, you know, the important people to me, the people that live and work here every day, you know, that you meet on the streets every minute.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, same question to you. Is your campaign taking money from developers or special interest groups?
Well, I'm not taking any money from developers, but as most folks know, I'm a teacher, I'm a union member, I'm pro labor. And so I have gotten contributions from labor organizations that support me, NUHW, SEU twenty fifteen, which is the home care providers, Teamsters, Three Nine Six, Working Families. I'm pro-union. Now, the difference is, as a council member in West Covina, we don't negotiate contracts with those folks. You know, I do not take money from our fire department union. I don't take money from our police department union. Again, we're in negotiations with them. It'd be very difficult to be able to take an honest stance in a negotiation having taken money from them and have them help me in my campaign. And so everyone that I've taken money from, I support. I support those working families. I support those unions, I support our nurses, our teachers, and I'm glad that they support me. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, has your campaign taken any money from developers or special interests?
Thank you for that question. And shockingly, I'm going to give you a real quick answer. The answer is no. However, I am highly ethical and I have a background in finance and following state, local, and municipal laws. And with that regard, I am very uncomfortable with the discussion even of donations and money. My treasurer is doing a really good job, working tirelessly, but we have not taken any money from anyone to support my campaign as your councilperson. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, your first this time. Under the current budget, will West Covina be able to increase salary and benefit packages for city employees?
We are going to increase salaries for employees because, again, this is a market. We need to be able to staff our city and provide services for the community. And that comes at a cost. Obviously, what that's going to look like, you know, we're in negotiations. But the reality is, we also live in the real world. And we understand that we want to have a dedicated staff that stays with the city. It's very important that you keep people and build that institutional knowledge of how to run a city. And it was very debilitating to the city when we lost so many longtime employees. And it's time that we get back to having twenty, thirty, thirty-five year employees that really understand the needs of the residents and are completely invested. When you work in a place for over two decades, that's your home.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, under the current budget, will West Covina be able to increase salary and benefit packages for their employees?
Having once been a labor negotiator for one of our local unions when I was working in the city of Pomona, it's a very delicate balance between trying to retain good employees and making sure that they can support their families. That includes childcare, gas, simple things in life. And then also retaining qualified employees, like treating them at a fair salary, fair benefits. Because as a civil service employee, as a longtime public servant, we work hard for you, for the community. We work hard for you in terms of public safety. We work hard for you every day, answering the phones when you have an emergency or answering the phone when you just want to have coffee. So labor is very important, safety is important, and our employees are priceless to make that machine operate clearly, effortlessly. When you dial the telephone, you want an employee that is vested in the community because they are being compensated fairly and they have the expertise that the city needs to move forward. Thank you.
John Shoemaker, under the current budget, will West Covina be able to increase salary and benefit packages?
Well, considering the budget they approved at a fifteen hundred dollar surplus, I guess the raise is going to be fifteen hundred dollars. Because otherwise, they're going to have to cut it from somewhere. We do have a lie, wholeheartedly agree. There's a group of people in the city, normally, basically the administrative staff, who have not received what they deserve. We've had other groups who have had their pay increased over the last few years, something like thirty to thirty-five percent. So, you know, in my mind, where are we going to get the money? You know, because we have fifteen hundred dollars according to the budget. So what ends up happening is things like medical and food programs get cut so we can give raises to, you know, one or two specific groups. So we need to look at this and take a hard look at who should be getting some raises because of the loss of being competitive in the marketplace. In those two areas, we're very competitive. So to me, they would be the ones that would miss out this go through.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, what will you do about the long-term structural deficit caused by the retirement system in West Covina?
That is actually a very complex question. Legally, the city is required to beat its retirement pension obligations. That is a requirement. Many cities, based on my experience, had years of opportunities to plan for that. However, no one could predict the COVID crisis, the economic crashes, and the realities that everyone has faced economically. that everyone has faced economically. These are the parts that are unpredictable. And when a city is planning to meet its pension obligations, when an employee is expecting to be able to retire from a company that they worked for forever, they have pride in their city, pride in the county, pride in whatever position they may have held as a teacher. The city, a council member, has the obligation to ensure that our legal obligations are met. And it is a struggle. It's a delicate balance, but it must be met. Thank you.
John Shoemaker, what will you do about the long-term structural deficit caused by the retirement system?
Well, at least when it comes to West Covina, I'm gonna be a little arrogant. But if they had listened to me in 2003, when everybody said, you know, the stock market was so high and Perks was never gonna come back and ask us for any money, I asked what fantasy land they would be in. So this has been a problem that's been going on for, you know, 20 years. 20 years. I think if you do something like, I know West Covina Unified did, they actually pay the full amount each year. The other thing that needs to be done is make Calpers pay attention to the market. Calpers, one year, during the time that the stock market tripled, went up 30%. It went up 200%, and they were able to go up 30%. Calpers used to be the gold standard. You know, all the big firms would go try to steal people from Calpers, because of how good of a job they did. But they've gotten too much into social engineering instead of saying, hey, we need to make sure people get their money.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, what will you do about the long-term structural deficit caused by the retirement system?
Yeah, I think my peers on the table mentioned it, but I think one thing that we need to do, and John really spoke to it right now, is, as a city, we have not done long-term financial analysis for the type of projects, the additions of bureaucracies, the hiring of staff. Again, these are things that should be planned out. When they did this, the audit, it was one of the biggest red flags that was happening in the city. And right after that audit came out, the very first vote I was a part of, it voted to separate from ALA County Public Health with no financial analysis. City of San Dimas said it would cost 60 to 90 million dollars. And so, this is something that has been a fight on the dais and behind closed doors, is to really get us to do long-term financial analysis before we move forward with any long-term projects. Thank you.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, we have more money questions here for you.
Okay.
What is your opinion on the money spent on the center medians?
Well, let's see. We spent $1.5 million for what is dead plants and broken Christmas tree lights. And that, even the council and the person who championed the project, Councilmember Diaz, as the centerpiece of why she should be re-elected, said, "It doesn't look as good as before we spent the money." You know, what could we have done with that $1.5 million? We have a dump that has a cap that's broken. The spill basin is broken. It's leaking methane. That is a clear and present danger to the residents of our community. So instead of spending the money up there to fix something to protect the health of our, we put in plants and lights. I think we have priorities a little misplaced right now.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, what is your opinion on the money spent on the center medians?
Well, I know none of it was spent in District One. So, we turned it down sunset. But no, the reality is, that's having wrong priorities. The reality is, if you're gonna be spending money on streets, it should be for paving them, to making sure that when people drive to work and drive home, they don't have to worry about potholes, they don't have to worry about damage to their vehicles. You worry about the public safety issue of it. And again, it goes to these projects where you take over the sportsplex, or you try to create your own public health department. It's getting away from what should be non-negotiables, right? Non-negotiables should be clean parks, paved streets, quality of life. And that's really it. So, as far as those medians, they, you know what, when a developer wants to come in, have them before it. That way, their houses will be more attractive to sell. That's what I say.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, your turn. Your opinion on money spent on the center medians?
Well, the center medium is right by my home.
Her fault.
It twinkles beautifully during the holidays. However, with all lightheartedness aside, I agree with my partners here that the $1.5 million that was spent on the mediums could have well been spent perhaps on enhancing and expanding our graffiti removal program. $1.5 million could have also expanded our COVID enforcement department, could have expanded our homeless outreach team. So, $1.5 million is really a lot of money. The medium, sometimes it slows traffic down. I've spoken to many residents who live along the medium, my neighbors, and what they would have preferred seeing is perhaps an expansion of a cycling track in order to encourage different types of transportation. So, $1.5 million is a lot of money. I feel it was not a priority, and it was a waste of taxpayers' dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, was it necessary to sell the public works yard?
Was it necessary to sell? We have not sold the public works yard. So...
I read the questions, if you have some comments.
The public works yard has not been sold? Thank you.
Thank you.
You could ask me that question. Not been sold.
John Shoemaker?
I understand the intent of the question. Currently, the Tony Moon majority is attempting to sell that. I don't know where we're gonna put our public's works yard once it's sold, but then that's part of the fiscal mismanagement our city has. His stated goal, and he told that to the city of Torrance, their council members, "Sell every piece of land you have to finance operations." That's like selling your house to go out to dinner. It doesn't make sense. I've been a financial manager for 44 years in the CPA, and I specialized in companies that were having financial problems. What we do here in West Covina, I would have walked in the door and said, "Here's the bankruptcy attorney," filed, and then go home. Because that's exactly what we're here. If it wasn't for COVID, we'd be out of business. And we might be, if the federal government comes back and says, "You know, that infrastructure that you did, that wasn't in the rules." And that terrifies me.
Cecilia Munoz, what's your stand on development at BKK? What would you like to see at that site?
I have a 20-year experience of hands-on environmental reviews throughout Los Angeles County. One of my bigger projects, I'll get to the answer on that, but one of my bigger projects was the city of Rancho Palos Verdes. I did an environmental review in which it was negative. As a representative of the county of Los Angeles, it was my intent to not put any public funds in the Rancho Palos Verdes activity. Here we are, 20 years later, and many of you, if you follow the news, you'll know that the land is sliding and there's something you can do about it. When it comes to West Covina, the BKK dump sits right above my home. Obviously, I live in the lowlands, and when we first moved to the area, it was an environmental mess. Thank goodness for very proactive residents in the city who were able to get that thing shut down. We do need to make sure that it's maintained. I would love to see a solar park. I would love to see a hiking trail. It is a beautiful jewel in the city. It can be. It is. We should never touch it. The residents who live there will suffer harm, illness, if we touch it, and we don't have the money, we don't have the expertise, and we make an environmental mess. So, my opinion is, let's keep it as a park. Thank you.
John Shoemaker, what's your stand on the development at BKK? What would you like to see done with that site?
First of all, I'd like to thank Cecilia Munoz for the compliment, because my wife and I, members of our family, were part of the plaintiffs that closed the place down. I'm strictly against any intrusive and significant development there. We have other things that we need to do up there to make sure that everything is working properly. We have a cap that needs to be repaired. We have methane gas that's leaking. We have a catch base that needs to be repaired. Until we do that, there's really nothing else that we should even be thinking about doing. Let's get it fixed so we don't have a monumental health hazard continuing for people who live in that area. Thank you.
Brian Tabatabai, what's your stand on development at BKK? What would you like to see done at that site?
The number one priority is the health of the community, and making sure that we guarantee that there will be no harm done to the residents that live around the BKK. I don't believe that every piece of land needs to be developed. I think the reality is, that there should be, in any community nature, places for folks to be able to get out of the hustle and bustle of life and have spaces. You know, I know that a solar farm is something that could benefit the community, and a lot of community members have spoken in favor of something like that. Again, the number one priority is the health and safety of the community that lives around the BKK. And as far as any other type of development, it would really need to be looked at and guaranteed that no one would be harmed by anything done there. Thank you.
John Shoemaker, more BKK stuff? What will you do with the sportsplex?
We need to find somebody who knows what they're doing up there. You know, I keep thinking that the night before they took the vote to take it over, they must have all stayed at the Holiday Inn Express, so they magically know how to do all these things now. We don't know how to do it. The place is closed. You look at, for example, all the Big League Dreams facilities are all open and functioning. They're just not holding employee parties and pat the back, you know, council patting themselves on the back. They're actually holding events and having teams in there, softball, baseball, right down the line, people actually enjoying it. So we need to admit, we don't have the expertise, and let's go find the expertise. Because it's costing us a million to a million and a half dollars a year right now, when we used to get four or $500,000. Again, how do you go from getting four or $500,000 a year to spending an additional million to million and a half? Again, it's priorities, and we need to deprioritize certain egos in the city.
Brian Tabatabai, what will you do with the sportsplex?
It was built to be a private-public partnership, and the city had a partnership with Big League Dreams. The reality is, I voted against the city taking it over, and I pushed for the city to find a private operator who knows how to run the facility. Beyond the subsidizing of the sportsplex and the staff time, we also have to understand that every day that it is closed and not running at full capacity impacts the businesses around it. We have a laser tag facility that should be full every weekend because teams are using the sportsplex for tournaments, and then going for team bonding at that laser tag, eating at the restaurants. Summertime, we should not have a Fourth of July, because on Fourth of July, it should be filled with teams from Tennessee, from Washington, from Maryland, coming to Southern California, staying in our hotels, paying that DOT tag, eating at our restaurants, enjoying West Covina, and that's really what should happen. We have two restaurants up there that are empty because no operator will take over a restaurant when 80% of the time the place is empty. Thank you.
Brian, I think this is your next question, unless I've lost track. Cecilia?
I don't think Cecilia answered that one, but I'll monitor your time.
Cecilia, would you like to answer that question?
With regards to the sportsplex, it is imperative to return the operation of the sportsplex to a private operator who has the expertise in dealing one with community, revenue, and also bringing that facility back to a pristine showcase that it was in its initial concept. One key piece to where we're at with the sportsplex is very disturbing to me. As a city commissioner, I hear from many, many of our residents who are part of the little leagues, who are having the darkest time to access that public facility, because it is either maxed out, booked out, and our own citizens here, our own young children, are not free to play baseball up there. That really is something that we need to address, and we need to have a private company come in and take care of that. One major issue too is the use of staff to run a facility takes away from day-to-day operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Tabatabai, it's now your turn. Do you support the creation of the West Covina Health Department? Why or why not?
I've been the lone vote against the establishment of a public health department from the beginning. We have no financial analysis. The city of Long Beach, that currently has their own public health department that they established over 100 years ago, had to let go of 70 employees. Because again, these are run with grant money, grant money has time limits, and the reality is, if you have a public health department, you need to provide those services. And if you don't have the grant money to provide those services, you need to access your general fund to provide those services. We already paid to ALA County through our property tax, we won't receive that money back. So we will be paying for the ALA County Public Health Department while also paying for the West Covina Public Health Department, getting less service for greater costs, and then having to cut from other services we already provide, because Pasadena has to cut, Long Beach has to cut. And we're not Pasadena, we're not Long Beach. You definitely know we'll have to cut. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Munoz, do you support the creation of the West Covina Health Department? Why or why not?
I do not support the creation of the West Covina Health Department. In our current city budget, and I encourage every single one of the residents out there watching, please take a look at our current budget. The West Covina Health Department is listed as an initiative. There is no physical health department. At this time, there is no public benefit. It would be a bold move for me on my first day, when I'm able to take a vote, to move for the elimination of the health department from the city's discussions, from the city's budget, from any of the issues that we had to deal with, with the subconsultants that are hired to do planning post-health events. And actually, that's about all they do, is consult. It is costing the city millions. I am against it. I invite the public, if I'm elected, to do it.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, do you support the creation of the West Covina Health Department? Why or why not?
As I've said earlier, that would be one of my first motions, is to end this silliness from the beginning. When you have a When you have a situation that somebody says that we're going to revolutionize healthcare delivery, you go, what is that revolution going to be? What's it going to cost? Well, what's it going to cost if you just do what we're doing? I don't know. Then, I don't know how I could support something that back. It's that simple. We need to get rid of it. We need to end it. Our mayor made very good points about how everybody else is saying, you know, they can't do it. They have to cut into the general fund. We're saying we don't have to, but they can't tell you how to do it. They can't tell you how to do it. So, yes, it is gone under my vote. So, I know we have at least two, and I'm pretty sure the third one, who's sitting in the audience, doesn't like it either. So, we'll probably be able to close it really quick.
Thank you. Last question I have is for you to start with, Cecilia Munoz. What is your position on police department funding? Do we need to increase the size of the police department?
My position on public safety, including police and fire, is that I am pro-labor. I believe that we must find a way financially to expand our current police department. We also need to include supportive services for the police department. And that would include ancillary services such as our code enforcement department. Public safety is critical. That would include also our partnerships with our CO2, our LePOTIC group, which does field research and outreach to our homeless community. And so, with the expansion of the police department, I would like to see them to just be able to go out and do the patrolling that we are accustomed to. Thank you.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, what is your position on the police department funding? Do we need to increase the size of the police department?
Just thinking as you're saying, that reminded me of a six million dollar banner that says, "We have the money to fix them." Yes, we do. We pay for two hundred public safety offices. We only have a hundred and sixty. We only have a hundred and sixty. If we take about three-quarters of that seven point two million dollars we spend in overtime, we can add forty new positions. Forty new positions. Twenty to twenty-five of those go to the police. And that basically takes the six or seven we have patrolling the city up to sixteen or seventeen. That eliminates a lot of problems. And it doesn't cost us any more money to do it. That's one of the things I bring is because my experience is to look at what we're doing to do things a little bit better, a little bit smarter. I've run my plan through various police chiefs and fire chiefs. And they said, yeah, it's very doable. But the only problem is, does your city have the will to do it? Well, there's at least one person that does have the will to do it. And that's me.
Brian Tabatabai, what is your position on the police department funding? Do we need to increase the size of the police department?
Well, on the funding issue, I don't see my friend Glenn Kennedy, who was here earlier. But the reality is, in order to increase the size of our police department, we need to increase funding from someone. Because right now, as our budget is set, as was mentioned earlier, we have spent what we can spend, and the community needs to understand that. The idea of cutting the overtime, I understand the talking point. But the reality of police work, the reality of the MOUs that have been signed with the two groups, that's just not a reality. This idea of we're going to save the seven million dollars in overtime, it just, that's a high mistime. And the reality is, if we want to increase the force, we're going to have to find more revenue. But I also believe that we can take away some of what our police department is currently doing. And that's why it's so important to get our homeless in shelter and off the streets so our police can patrol the streets and keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last question. So, we will now have questions from the floor for you folks, either for the entire group or for individuals. But if it's addressed to one individual, others may respond.
First of all, I'd like to thank again our three candidates that showed up. Our speaker, Dan Evans. We're very grateful for their calls and emails accepting. Again, I want to thank our committee horrendously. I don't think you understand that we put this whole thing together in one week. I think we did a good job. The technical stuff going on here is phenomenal. And again, that was Steve and Mario and Jay and Don. They would not be live streaming. And right now, he just told me there was a hundred and forty people live streaming it. So, this is getting out into West Covina. Yeah, I think it's very beginning for the people at home. No one told me that the camera was here and I was speaking. So, y'all heard the beginning of it, but the people at home didn't see. So, I will be taking questions from the floor. Anyone who does not want to be on camera, tell me. I will step back there so you're not on camera. But if you want questions, yes, Sheri. Yes, they will have closing statements too. Each of them will get a closing statement. Any questions from the floor? Yes.
Cut that health program and maybe using, I like Shoemaker's suggestion about the overtime. If you were to cut that percentage of overtime, would you be able to expand the police a little bit?
Hey Lois, can you kind of direct that that way it's not in the reroll? Who do you want to answer?
You know, you're trying to create a health program that costs a lot of money. And I do agree with the way he's saying about the overtime. Maybe you can use a percentage of that cut of the overtime and getting rid of that health plan and maybe expand, maybe not to the extreme, but maybe expand a little bit. We do need a community.
Is that question just to Mr. Shoemaker or is it everybody?
Yeah, I think it's directed at me first and then I think everyone else can.
If we could let John answer first and then we'll take down to you.
Yeah, John, go ahead. Like I said, I'll talk to people who are experts in the area and they will argue that. Because the nature of our overtime is to fill slots because we don't have people there. You put people there, it eliminates the need for that overtime. And I fully understand, you have a person who's investigating a crime and it's five thirty. He's not going to leave at six because that's when his shift ends. But, you know, it takes a different approach. And I do have to kind of laugh when I hear things like, well, the MOUs. Well, that's the agreement you made. Don't make the agreement again. You know, I mean, there's certain things that you have to do. You know, and it's sometimes, you know, being a member of the city council, you have to be the adult in the room and say, no, we can't do this because of the impact that it has on other places and other people. And I'm going to be the adult in the room and say, once in a while, say, no. We've got a different way of doing it.
Sheri, could we repeat the other question again? So, if the other candidates would like to respond?
Yes. Well, I mean, I can respond. It was about the, if we cut the public health departments and we do some things with overtime, would that provide funding to hire more public safety? First, the money that has been spent on the public health department has come from the restricted funds of ARPA, American Rescue Plan money. So, nothing's come out of the general fund as of yet. So, that doesn't change anything. Actually, if we were to have our application for our public health department approved, then we'd actually be having to make cuts because it definitely would take general fund money. Now, on the question of overtime and negotiations and MOUs, again, I don't want to give a false sense to the community to say, hey, you know what? We'll just take a hard line on our fire union and police union. And we're going to say, we're going to cut this overtime and we're going to renegotiate these MOUs in such a way that now all of a sudden, each of you is taking a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar pay cut that you had as part of your salary for the past twenty years. I think if you think that that negotiation is going to go well, I don't think you're really dealing in reality or really taking into account the families that are involved. You're asking for a major sacrifice. And that's not going to happen.
Cecilia, do you have comments?
I have a comment with regards to the gentleman's statement. With regards to the amount of overtime that is currently documented in the city's budget, it's also documented in the city's fiscal recovery plan. It is an issue. From my experience working with municipal government budgets, staff salaries, public safety, when you have moved key staff, in this example, it would be you have staff that you have moved to the sportsplex and you've taken them away from their normal operating responsibilities, someone has to fill that gap. That gap then oftentimes ends up with someone who does not have the expertise, who does require to spend four or five hours behind the desk, learning the job, getting things done in order to be responsive to the community. So, we must work together to get this done. It's not an easy answer. Thank you.
Do we have any further questions? And I prefer you, do you want to go out of camera?
I'm not a West Covina resident. I'm from next door.
The microphone needs to be closer.
Did you hear it now?
Yes.
My question to all of you is, I've been to a lot of police departments over the years and they're breaking due or completely eliminating the reserve officer program. They're not even a reserve academy anymore. To help with policing levels, would you support the funding of having a good reserve program for additional officers on the street? And as a safety measure, having two officers in the car instead of one? Because as we all know, these people will be overwhelmed in a fantastic and very quick time. And we're definitely having to use the officers on the street.
We'll begin with Brian Tabatabai, I guess, John.
I think that any approach that would be able to give experience to people to be law enforcement is important. Again, I think one of the things with being a police officer, it is a heavy task that we ask of them. And to create a reserve officer program through college like Rio Hondo, as a high school teacher, right, to create that next, or for folks that transitioned in their life and maybe the commitment to being a public law enforcement isn't what they want, but they want to help in their community for public safety. I think one big public safety response is just having eyes on the street, right? So, having patrols, even if, you know, I think that's one of the reasons of having code enforcement, right? You have code enforcement driving around, you have PD driving around. It makes the community safer.
Cecilia Munoz, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, I think your question is excellent. Having a reserve program is a good career path for our youth. Our young high schoolers coming out of high school who may not be quite sure about college, who may not be sure about trade, having invested in their community as a reserve officer, serving their neighborhoods, learning the trade is an excellent career path for any young person, male or female. My grandson happens to be a fire, a West Covina Fire Department Explorer. He's graduated from high school and now he's enrolled at Mount San Antonio College where he is excelling. These programs are critical in a community. Job opportunity, training, team learning, best investment in your community is priceless with this type of a reserve program, whether it be fire or police. Thank you. It's a great question.
John Shoemaker, would you like to respond?
Yes. I think you have a very good idea. The unfortunate part is, I think, the reason a lot of the reserve disappeared because of the changes in the law, that you almost have to go through the same, the exact same training to be equivalent to a police officer. So, if you're going to go through that, become a police officer. So, it's not quite the same. I look at things like, I think they would call community service officers who would do a lot of the things that the police officers do or are doing now. They would do the home checks. They would, you know, somebody had the window broken out of their car, they would go get the forks and they would do those types of things instead of officers. The idea of having two officers, the way West Covina has done it is they're in separate cars and they'll respond together. So, you can't split out and have more coverage. But in situations that somebody's pulled over, two of them are supposed to be going to a house. So, there is that. But it was, you know, excellent ideas, definitely things that we should look at.
And I am counting on Mario and Steve to keep me in check because I don't have a lot on. So, any other questions? Because each of our candidates do have their closing statements. Any other questions?
If elected, can you name one thing you would stop, stop, and continue on day one?
Who starts this time, John? Cecilia? I'm sorry.
On day one, I would stop talking. On day one, the first thing I would do is host a state community meeting, again, all invited. What I would stop is, of course, is, and this gets a little long-winded, but our community needs to be respected. Their voice, their opinions, and their ideas matter. And we need to develop that public discourse that is inviting to not only our seniors who are here, our young people coming up, and the kids in school. We need, we really need to work on that. So, I would stop disrespecting our community as a council member. Their voice matters. I would continue encouraging the residents here to be active, to vote, to go to our parks, to take our hats, to read the newsletter, to show up at the council meetings. I'm going to get up, not skip. I encourage all of you to do that and take your families with you. It's wonderful to see everyone here. Thank you.
John Shoemaker, would you like to respond?
Yes. Well, even before I take office, day one, when I'm elected, you'll hear, you will hear a collective sigh of relief from a lot of people in our community because the Tony Moon majority is gone. So, they, everybody from staff, staff, consultants, will understand that they no longer have to worry about satisfying one person, that there be three independent votes who are interested in the public, interested in our staff, interested in our community. So, when I take office, that's going to be the first thing that happens is there's just going to be a general tone. People know they can do their jobs and they'll go about being able to do them and not have to worry about somebody calling them and saying, do this now. Because as a member of the council, there's only two people that work for the council, city manager and the city attorney. We should not be speaking to, you know, somebody at a lower level because what do you tell a member of the council? No, I'm not going to do that. That disappears because it isn't going to happen anymore.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Oh, wait. Yeah, I think Cecilia left me some time. So, number one, I'm going to stop the health department. And, you know, I'm hoping to have three votes, but I continue to work with the governor's office to make sure that it doesn't happen. I will start making sure that our community is connected with the rest of the San Gabriel Valley. Active SGBs is really creating a more walkable, bikeable, just more friendly pathway throughout the San Gabriel Valley. And we really should be a part of that. You know, we've been an island for too long. I think we need to continue to build those relationships with our neighbors. And I'll continue to fight to bring... And I'll continue to fight to bring people inside. And that is, you know, a promise I made in 2020 when I ran. As a community, it's our moral responsibility to take care of each other. And it's not okay with me to know that when it was 115 degrees outside, we have folks suffering outside.
Thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, I would like to thank very much our timekeeper, Josh Sanchez. And I'd like to thank Lois. You've done an outstanding job. If they could step in and step up for everyone else right now. Thank you very much. I'm here for a little bit to Lois so that she can do the closing.
Thank you very much. Each one of our candidates now has a three-minute closing statement. We'll begin with Brian Tabataba and move to Cecilia Munoz and then John Shoemaker. If you have any additional comments that you didn't have time to make when you were answering other questions or you want to include in your closing comments, you may do so. Brian Tabataba, please begin.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everyone who decided to give up their time to be here, watch on YouTube. You know, Dodgers have a big game today. So I was honestly thinking this'd be empty. I think the Mets won, no? Yeah, so, but no. I think it really shows how much our community does care and how important it is to everyone that we are being represented by good folks. And the reality is that I also want to acknowledge how much courage the folks up on the stage have. It is not easy to run for office. Families sacrificed quite a bit. And so everyone who runs for office, including the two members who didn't show up today, have my utmost respect. Because this is not easy. You know, you put yourself out there, you leave yourself vulnerable. No, they can't appear. But you do it because you want to make a difference. You want to be part of solving those problems. And that's what I fought to do these past four years, what I will do these next four years. You know, I'm invested in West Covina. This is my forever home. We bought our house here in 2016. My son was three years old. Whenever we go to LA, he's like, Dad, I'm a suburb kid. I'm a West Covina kid. He's like, take me back to West Covina. And I'm proud of that, right? He loves this place. I love this place. And I want to see it thrive. I want to see everyone who calls this place home thrive. I want to make sure everyone knows that this is their space, that this is their place, that they are honored, they are valued, they are included, and that this is a community we can all be proud of. There have been times where, I know it's been tough, and there's been things that has happened on the council that has made us ashamed. But know that every day that I'm the mayor here in West Covina and every day that I will be serving here, I understand my responsibility to all of you to represent the city of West Covina with the highest level of ethics and honesty and that I'll do the work. And that's what you'll know you get from someone who will do the work. So thank you again, all of you for being here, all of you on YouTube. Just thank you for giving me these last four years to be a representative. I hope on November 5th, you vote Brian Tabataba for West Covina City Council District 1. Thank you.
Cecilia Munoz, two closing remarks and any additional comments, including Munoz's remarks.
My closing remarks are just a statement. A promise lies in change. The time is now for a course correction. It is time. Your vote for me is a vote of confidence. It is a vote for the future. There were discussions that we had, of course. I did talk a lot for that. I apologize. But one of the key items that came up, of course, was labor negotiations, staff overtime, the disrespect to our municipal employees who, as we speak, might be out there running a park program. So these things that we talk about are intricately connected in the stability of our finances, in the leadership that we have, the best investments that we make as individuals here, the investments that you make and the vested interest that you may have in your own families, in the schools, in the reason why you live in West Covina. So public safety is a priority. And overtime happens because we are underfunded. We don't have enough staff, folks. And that's kind of across the board. We need good leadership. We need to show them that we care. They need to be respected so that our elected officials, as a council person, I will lead, but I will only lead with your voice. I will hear you. I will hear your children. I work for the school district. I see children every day. I'm a childcare provider. I was a caregiver. I will care for you. I will care for all your seniors. I will care that our environment is clean. I have a son who has asthma. His daughter has asthma. We live near the BKK though. So these things matter. But I am vested in the community. I am not going anywhere. And proudly, neither is my family. Thank you.
Thank you. John Shoemaker, your closing remarks and any additional comments you didn't get to include, please.
First of all, I want to thank everyone who attended tonight, whether you're in person, watching on the internet or be watching a little bit later. Special thanks to the West Covina Candidate Forum Committee, a diverse group dedicated to organizing this event on such short notice, as well as our moderator, Lois, with timekeeper Josh, and all those who contributed to the success of this evening. We also appreciate the support of First Branch, the West Covina Historical Society along Front Street, which means, good thing I'm walking tomorrow because I think there's a five pounds that I gained during the drive. Tonight was an important opportunity